Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of Wednesday, July 5th. It's 5:30. I'm going to call the meeting to order. First order of business is announcements. Marlene or Ed, do you have anything to announce?
[inaudible]
All right. I think the only thing I would mention is that we are getting ready to notify those people who have come forward to be part of the 350th
Yes.
celebration, which will take place in 2018. So if there's any interest, please let Marlene know or Key. In the secretary's office, we'll be putting the committee together, who will oversee the entire aspect of the festivities, I would think, but certainly will require lots of town people's input and suggestions in doing so. So I just wanted to throw that out because we haven't spoken about it much lately. Do you have anything to add to that? Okay. Next, we have public forum, if anybody is here for that portion of the agenda. Excellent. All right. We have some minutes to approve. Minutes of April 25th and June 7th, if there's a motion for that.
I'll make a motion, accept the minutes.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. My question was on first paragraph, town administrative expense. Was that supposed to be 25K?
Are you referring to the April 25th minutes?
Yes, 425.
Yeah, the fourth sentence down in the first paragraph.
It was increased 20,000. Actually, that should be, well, it depends. We increased it at various meetings.
Correct.
The total increase was 30,000
It was 30.
Because it was budgeted for nine.
I think this meeting, however.
Depending on this meeting, it may have been 20.
All right.
And then we increased it an additional 10.
Correct.
Okay.
Could catch Ed, though.
That's it.
Was there anything else on either of the minutes?
No.
All right. There's been a motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Great. Thank you. So at this time, it gives me great pleasure to ask our town clerk, Lydia Zisch, and our new police chief, Mike DeKoschak, to come forward, please. And why don't your wife Jennifer come with you? What we're going to do, folks, for you, those of you at home and the small audience we have here, is to do an official swearing-in of Chief DeKoschak. So I'm just going to slide to the right and be out of the way, and you guys can stand right in the corner there, perhaps.
I'm ready. Thank you right now. I, Mike DeKoschak, solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as the police chief for the town of Hatfield according to the best of my ability, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and under the rules, regulations, and bylaws made under the authority thereof, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Yep. Welcome aboard. Thank you. Thanks, Lydia. And also, I'd like to just take a moment to thank our retired chief, Tom Oslie, for his many, many years of service to the town of Hatfield as an officer and, of course, as a chief, and wish him a long and healthy retirement. And now we can just sort of relax. So congratulations to Tom Oslie. All right. Our next topic of business, sticking with the police department theme, is we have an appointment to be made. Chief, if you want to say a few words, I know the candidate's here, Mark Ruddock. So, I don't know.
Yes, our new full-time officer, Mark Ruddock, is being appointed tonight, and I ask the board to go ahead and go through with that.
Okay. Mark, welcome. And I would say that as I went through your resume, you have quite a background, and Hatfield's fortunate to have somewhat of your caliber on our police department. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Ruddock to the Hatfield Police Department.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you all.
You bet.
With one hearing, congratulations.
Right now. Well, I guess officially in seven minutes. Thank you, Mark. Ryan Moir, it's nice to meet you.
I'm going to go down and swear him in.
Yep.
Congratulations. Welcome to Hatfield.
Okay. That's how we do things here.
Boom, boom.
Okay. So we do have a public hearing, which is supposed to start at 5:45. So it's a little, we have a few minutes before that, so I think we should go out of order with some of the reports.
Sure.
Open space is going to be here a little bit later as well. Is that correct?
They will be here this evening.
Okay. It's coming out of your salary, Ed. So I don't know what you want to do. You want to do the HR?
We could do that. I also noticed that Phil inserted the agreement.
He did.
And that really just requires the Board of Selectmen to make a motion.
Okay. So really, what that's all about is to enter into an agreement, an MOU, which is memorandum of understanding for the sludge hauling and disposal. So we'd be doing that with Franklin County Solid Waste Management District, something we've done in the past. This just makes it official, and it's the new MOU to bring us up to date and current with the, I guess, probably for the next year, right?
Yes, it's a yearly.
So it's a yearly.
July 1 through June 30th of next year.
So we just needed to make this official, so.
And this was recommended by DEP, our DPW director?
Oh, the DPW director is recommending this.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Is there a motion to enter into the MOU with Franklin County Solid Waste Management for a period of one year?
I'll make a motion based on, yeah, I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'll second that. Do you have any, is there any further discussion?
No, we're just, we're basing this on the recommendation by the DPW, our director, correct?
That is correct.
That's fine.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
There is a warrant.
Yep.
If the Board of Selectmen would vote to approve.
Let's go back for a minute now, because we went out of order a little bit.
But there's a few of them there.
Yes.
I'll be glad to.
So this is our, basically our monthly or bi-monthly?
Yeah. I'll be glad to read them, and then if you just want to take one vote to authorize them.
Sure. Sure, if you'd like to do that.
All right. So the first vendor warrant is 1049 for $19,754.95. Warrant 2,000 for $552,436.
Right.
Warrant 2,001 for $127,000. Warrant 2,400 for $155,055. Warrant 1048, $44,812.04.
Right. So the warrants, what we've been doing is voting on these monthly or every two weeks that they come before us. This is part of the warrants that Ed and I and select person Doty review when we come to Town Hall, you know, during our meetings. But we're taking them up at our regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting, just to make it official, so. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the vouchers as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the vouchers as presented.
Is there, I'll second that. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay. Next up is, as you know, I'm reviewing with the Board of Selectmen. We've been talking about this for some time, reviewing the HR policy. And this is not in any order, we're just taking up sections that maybe have presented problems or just are a priority.
Yep.
So I am presenting to you Section 22, which is the travel policy. Actually, very small changes, if you want to call them changes.
Sure.
Section, under Item 2, this requires preapproval by the department head, and I'm recommending, and it said previously, well, it currently states, "and" the Board of Selectmen chair. In some cases, if it's the department head that's going to be traveling, they should be seeking the approval from the Board of Selectmen chair. If it's an employee within DPW or under a department head, I'm recommending that the department head approve or grant that travel expense.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
So that's what that does under 2.
Okay.
And then Number 10, which addresses reimbursements, and it does say traveling interstate, which is within
Right.
within the state. I just added "within the boundaries of the state," so everybody understands.
What interstate meant.
What interstate is.
Okay. I'm good with those. So I guess.
Unless you'd like to change anything or add out-of-state travel?
I would think overnight travel is based on mileage.
Yes.
Regardless of whether it's intra-state, in-state, or interstate. I mean, you know, you can get to places in Vermont or New Hampshire a lot easier than you can get to parts of Massa, you know, certain parts of Massachusetts. So I think that's all we'd be, just looking to clarify that. I guess, just for clarification, hi Cindy.
Hi Cindy.
Have a seat. It's all right.
You haven't started yet, right? 5:45 on the sheet they gave.
No, it's 5:30. We have started.
Oh, no, it says 5:45.
It does.
It's all right.
Yeah. If you like. Huh, interesting.
Okay. Why don't we, we'll just finish this topic, and then we'll let Cindy get settled. So really, what we're talking about is nothing new. This already existed. We're just looking for clarification, because we want to make sure that all our, the employees of the town understand what the process, the policies, and the procedures are, as far as if any expenses are incurred on behalf of the town, or if they have to incur any out-of-pocket expenses, to how they get reimbursed for it. And it's by following these procedures, which is submitting your receipt and the voucher. Just, you know, it's a paper trail of making sure, should an audit ever come down the pike, everybody's covered with doing, following the procedures, so.
45.
Yep.
We have to know.
Oh, a hearing. We have a hearing at 5:45.
Yeah. So do you, was this just advisory, or do you actually want a vote to just add that one little thing?
I am recommending to, what I inserted in red, I don't know if it's red in your copy.
Yeah, it's red.
If that's acceptable.
So, I mean, you want a motion? You want to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
That you approve of that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. So are you okay with those changes?
I'm fine with the changes.
And I don't, Cindy, we were just clarifying.
Yes, I've read that over.
If you're comfortable with, okay.
Yeah, I've read it over. I'd just like to apologize, though, because it does say 5:45 on the posting for the meeting.
Yes, it does.
And I was five minutes early.
The cheat's at 5:30.
Yeah. Because I picked it up one day.
We won't hold it against you. Welcome. Welcome back. So we'll entertain a motion just to make those two changes to Section 22 of the travel policy?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. So just because we're doing stuff, I didn't want you to think I was stealing this, Cindy, but we had a swearing-in for Chief DeKoschak, and we were just trying to clean up that edge of the table, so I moved that over. And now that you're here, I'll give it back to you. All right. It is 5:45. We have Nick here from Eversource. So we have a public hearing, and because we've run out of order, I've got to find my notes again, Nick. So we're opening the public hearing now. The public hearing is referring to an installation on Malloy, if I'm saying that correctly, Avenue, to a pad mount transformer, then feeding the underground cable to two silos on town, taking pad mount from center of Straits Road. So we open this as a public hearing, so if any of the neighbors who would have been notified that this public hearing was taking place wanted to come and offer their comments or opinions, they would have certainly been able to do so. I don't know, do you want to just maybe give a little overview?
Yeah, sure.
Of what exactly it is we're referring to?
Yep.
Okay.
So on Malloy, I have a contractor, an electrician, applied for service at the lots 73 through 70, sorry, 72 through 76. And they don't want to go with the conventional overhead, they want to go all underground. So we require them to provide underground to all the lots available left. That way, anybody who wants to build can tie into that. So they'd be running one conduit in town, taking to a pad mount location down by the rotary, and then two silos just beyond that, so people can hook into those.
As the property is sold?
Yes.
In homes or built?
Yep.
Okay. Did you have a question?
No, no. I took, this property's under development at this time, so.
Right. Yeah, and it makes sense. I mean, that's kind of what, underground.
Yeah, it's a little nicer to it.
Sort of as a way, right.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Was anybody here to talk about this particular hearing? Okay. Cindy, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
I read through and saw how many lots there were.
Or Marlene?
I'm all set.
Okay, Nick. So at this point, there's no public comment. The select board is all set with any questions they had are answered, so I'm going to close the hearing and entertain a motion to approve the.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Is there a second?
There is seconded.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded to grant approval. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That was easy. Thank you, Nick.
Have a good one.
Yeah, thank you. You, too. Okay. Bye, Lydia. Okay. Hi, Rich.
Hi, Ryan. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
Good. We had some things that we went out of order, so I'm just trying to get it back together here.
I'm actually waiting for fellow committee members.
Oh, so you're still, you're still waiting for some others? Okay. Things are moving a little quicker than anticipated, so that's fine. We'll see who else comes in.
I'm waiting for you.
Okay. So we're going to let Rich, we'll just give a few minutes to see if some other open space folks come, so we could talk about topics 7, 8, or 9, if you wanted to. Marlene, they're under your report, and I think we've done everything on.
Just a request
Yep.
for the Board of Selectmen. You had met with the building inspector
Yes.
a couple of weeks ago
We had.
and approved his contract renewal for July 1, 2017, which is a three-year contract.
Right.
So I just ask that the Board of Selectmen vote.
To make it official?
Definitely.
Or to approve it? Okay. Yes, we did meet and, with the building inspector, Kyle Scott, and want to thank him for everything he's done thus far, and we had some questions, and he was certainly able to answer them. Has a very good reputation
He certainly does.
From everyone I've spoken to, works hard. So I guess all I would ask is if we have a, is there a motion to approve the building inspector contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the building inspector's contract.
Is there a second?
Second that motion.
Okay. Under discussion, did anybody have anything that they wanted to say or address?
No, I think we covered it all last meeting we was here.
Last meeting? You were all set, then?
I'm all set.
All right.
We already met with them.
Yep.
We already talked.
Yeah, we're making it official now.
Yes.
By voting it in a public session, so.
We have to vote to accept it in a public meeting.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. All right.
Would you like me to move on to topic 8?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, as you know, we solicited quotes to have several town parcels surveyed.
Yep.
And in front of you is the map of those parcels.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd ask for the Board of Selectmen's approval, unless you have any questions or comments.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Cindy.
Okay. The, it said it was for the purpose of an environmental survey. Is that because of the transfer of land that it's required when there's a transfer of the center school?
Well, the.
And the park, is that due to the renovations?
The park was required, because we're going to have some landscaping renovations done. Town hall and emergency purposes is for the purpose of installing the elevator. There will be electrical conduits
Okay.
running underground. And the parcel, the field behind the center school, that was a town meeting authorization last year to preserve approximately two-thirds of that field for recreational purposes.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to know if it was because of what's going on with each one, or if it was something that was done every so many years or something.
Oh, yeah, it just pertaining to the work that's being done.
Ed, did you have any
Thank you.
You're welcome.
comments or?
No, I mean, if you're happy with the report, I reviewed it. Looks pretty good.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the property surveys as presented?
I'll second that.
I'll make a motion to accept the property as surveyed.
Okay.
That's because I was late and making it up.
There's been a motion made and a seconded.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Ross, Ed?
Yeah, okay. So on our agenda, we have, the open space committee is going to come forward and talk about the Smith Academy Park renovations and where we stand, and then a couple of bad issues, a couple of things that need to take place to have things stay on track, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So will that Rich and Peter have before?
So I thought I passed out. These are, we had a, I didn't bring the full poster of the preliminary design, but I did. That's one of the questions, helpful to reference this.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So just in the general update, we, Martha Lyon, who's the landscape architect, was, her contract was signed in the spring. We sort of, kind of tagged along with a survey that was being done for Town Hall for the renovations that Martha was able to use, because she needed a survey. And then she also, as a result of the situation with, when the school was built and there was sidewalk heaving and had to do with soil, and so she felt the need to have a soil test, and so that was recently done. So we're expecting her at our July 20th open space committee meeting to have sort of like the construction design. What you're seeing there in front of you is the preliminary design. And once she has a construction design and an updated budget, you know, maybe tweaked a bit, but then we'd be going out to solicit bids somewhere, hopefully in August, with hopefully construction done by the end of this year. That's the current timeline.
Sure.
So the two sort of issues to discuss, I want to sort of get selectmen's input on. One has to do with the veterans' stone. So, and I think Ed was at one of our early meetings, and I'm not sure we had Martha's design at this point. But if you can see in her design, what she's sort of picturing is that the veterans' stone actually get pivoted. Instead of facing the sidewalk, they get pivoted and facing one of the walkways that goes into the park. So, I mean, the stones are not on the Smith Academy Park footprint originally, so I wouldn't feel like that's something that we can just do. And, you know, I think Ed, at the time we spoke, I'm sure, you know, I don't think you were, you were kind of neutral on, you know.
Well, no. I think what it was agreed upon, this was a while back
Yeah.
as I was chair of the Veterans Commemorative Committee, the consensus among the veterans was, as long as the stones stay in front of Memorial Hall
Yeah.
they could be rearranged.
Okay.
They didn't want the stones in the park, they wanted it part of Memorial Town Hall.
Yeah.
So that was the consensus, and I think that's what we got back to with, as far as everybody's feeling and from the veterans in town.
Okay. And maybe that was communication with Martha, because she sort of had a little bit more affirmative, you know, we can do this as opposed to what I did. So that's good. I mean, it is going to be, pretty much, as you can see, it's just going to be pivoted a little bit.
They're just, yeah.
Yeah.
But they're staying in front of Memorial Town Hall.
Exactly.
So I think that'll keep everybody happy.
Right. The second one was just really, it's been, was in the original budget, but really, we hadn't sort of talked about it that much, and which was lighting in the park. So what Martha's envisioning is what are called bollard lighting. You're probably familiar with them, Ed, perhaps. They could be any size, but they're basically, the classic one is a little bit of a tube type of black thing that comes up with a light, and the light pretty much reflects down. It doesn't reflect up. You know, we don't really, you know, the, at some point, the town, I mean, the park, just go back a few years, the street lamp, there's a street lamp in the middle with a wire going straight across, but that hasn't been, I don't know if that was shut down when the town decided to turn off a lot of the streetlights, or whether it just bulb died and no one fixed it.
It's been a long time.
Yeah. And so, you know, this would be sort of, you know, it's a different look to have these lights, which presumably would go on at dark and come back off. You know, they'd be light sensitive. And, you know, there's a couple of issues. One, you know, I guess get a feel of whether that seems appropriate for the park, because it is totally new. I think there's a little bit of safety issue in there, and on the plus side, meaning there's a little bit of lighting where there wouldn't be any.[1588.82] a little bit of lighting where there wouldn't be any. And the second issue is the lighting has an operating cost. And, you know, we'd be tapping in, right now that wire goes from the pole to another pole in the middle of the park. I'm not sure whether the town was paying that, or the trustees were paying that bill. So somehow that would have to sort of be worked out so that it's on the town meter, and that's, you know, an operating cost. My understanding, the operating cost for each light is like in the $10 to $15 per year range, and depending on the number of lights, dozen lights or so.
The town did take over the account for a street light that the trustees was paying for, so I expect it's probably that one.
I mean, do they look at solar at all, as just a possibility for the park?
Yeah, I'm not sure they, did Martha, did, I think, because, you know, I'm not sure the length of time that, you know, I guess, my understanding, you don't get a full night, although you'd get several hours, but, so no, she has it up, we've not talked about that.
I mean, what, is the intent of the lighting to sort of provide some type of security throughout the night, is that the intent? Or is it just to provide lighting for walkways for short times, or?
Yeah, so I think, you know, where Martha's coming to come from is probably a park which might be more, used more in the evening, might be more in, you know, city setting. And this is provides, you know, you know, lights up the pathway so you don't trip or anything, and plus, you know, a little security too. So I think that's where she's coming from. You know, ours, we don't get much use at night. And I think it will look, you know, I mean, I think the look of it at night is very nice. But again, because it was kind of new, I just felt like I need to-
Yeah, because right now there's signs around town, after dark posted, no trespassing type.
Yeah.
So, I mean, when are these lights going to be on, or is it, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm not sure what the bylaw is intent, or what was set up for the town as far as nighttime for access to the property.
Yeah, and that could be-
Because there are signs posted throughout this town at the schools and stuff-
Right.
-and over there is after dark, they're not supposed to be on the property, so.
Right.
I mean, those lights are nice, I guess if you're going to have some type of event, if the intent is later on to have some type of event, and it gets dark, and then they have access off, or?
Yeah, and I'm not sure that's the intent. I think it's more of, if someone's walking through at night and there's a little, you know, little safety issue, I guess.
Yeah, it does say no admittance after dark, but it's never been enforced either, so I don't know, are we looking to change that, or?
That should be discussed.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen the sign, we've not talked about it again, you know, but-
So, Rich, do you, do you know how many lights are being proposed in her plan? Like, how many of these?
No, we don't, and so we have the ability to sort of, you know-
Sure, so, I mean, I totally get that if it's at night, we don't want, we would prefer, I would imagine, not to have it be pitch black if people are there, if they're cutting through, you know. And then the lights themselves that you're referring to, are they sort of the shorter ones that go along people's, like a path usually, is that, versus a tall type of-
Exactly. I mean, they probably, this, you can get them various heights, but they're, you know, anywhere from three feet to one feet, you know, I'm not sure exactly what Martha has in mind, it depends, you know, it's, a lot of it's design-related.
Sure, I mean, I, and I think my biggest question with that, so first off, as far as the veterans' stones, I was glad to hear that the veterans' committee has already spoken about it, because I think turning them and facing the sidewalk actually makes more sense, and would be more aesthetically pleasing, and staying in front of Memorial Town Hall is what the goal was for the veterans. As far as the lights, I think we might have a better feel for it if we knew sort of what Martha was, you know, is there every five feet, is there every 20 feet? You know, I mean, is it just enough to have a little bit of light so that if ultimately down the road, which is probably the goal of having this, you know, there's a concert at night, or there's something, is every, you know, in the dark, are people going to be able to leave safely without it being pitch black, right? So I think that might be part of it. You know, the other thing, when I see the design, that I don't know that people can see, but the design of the gazebo, I would imagine there's going to be some sort of lighting, not only inside of it for whatever's happening inside, but perhaps some not-so-bad-looking spotlight type of lighting could be, you know, on the surfaces, that can be turned on if there's a concert that goes into the dark, and then for safety, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know if that's an option, I don't know if it was spoken about, I'm just sort of thinking out loud with this.
Right, because Martha's design, so we split that, as you may recall, we split that gazebo off to phase two-
Right.
-for funding purposes. So we haven't got that far. Lights were envisioned, and sort of, sort of open focus in terms of what they're looking at.
Yeah.
And presumably, hopefully, some sort of speaking, speaker system too.
Yeah, right.
So, but that is phase two, and that's not something Martha would have addressed at this point.
She's very responsive to, to, you know, discussion, I mean, when we have discussions, she's very good. She, I think Rich would say the same thing, right?
Yeah, because I'm sure going to, I'm thinking you're going to have some type of a power source in this area to be used for the future needs, whether you're having a concert, or summer series, or something like that, so.
Right.
There's going to be power over here, so it's, who's going to pick up the cost of the meter, and I guess we're going to have to put a meter on that, and monitor it, and get billed, and-
Right, well, I was, you know, sort of, not in my area at all, but I was hoping that the current connection from that pole would then, you could sort of do a conduit right down the pole and go under the, you know, go under and come up, you know, by pavilion and have the meter, and also the lights would run from there too.
Yeah. To answer your question, it's going to be the town that pays for those things. But, and that's something else down the road that have been part of these conversations for the last few years. If something like this exists, then are there ultimately going to be rentals and things like that? So some of the costs may be absorbed through a rental fee. But again, this is sort of phase one, as you, as you mentioned. I, you know, I, again, I just go back to those lights and how high they are, and, you know, I'm thinking of kids riding bikes, and, you know, I don't know, and by that I mean crashing into them, not necessarily using them as a light source to be a safety source.
Right.
I mean, they're susceptible, right?
Right.
I mean, if you have an event and you had, you needed lighting, you could probably have a switch over here, a locker ball where they can turn the lights on, make sure people get out safely, and-
The other thing I was, I was just going to mention is, you know, you're talking about that. Now, if we discuss, you know, I think we have to first say, is it going to be no admittance after dark? Now, even if you have the signs, if you have those lights up, I'm thinking legally, that is an invitation for people to walk through. If they're not enough, they trip and fall, they're going to sue the town, they're going to say that wasn't lit well enough. So you're opening up liability by putting those lights there in the first place, because whether or not it says no admittance after dark, if you have the sidewalk lit, that is considered an invitation. Do you know, why would they have lights if they didn't want us to walk through in the dark? So it can, a liability-wise thing. And one other point is, you talked about the pole out back, when we talked, and I'll show you this just in a second, but just, when we talked about more parking, the Housing Authority, right here where the parking spots all behind the town, they'll go this far, we can fit nine more there, that was the solution they were looking at, and the DPW director said he could do that. So that was being looked into. That's where that pole is. Okay, that is, you're talking, hooking in, and they were going to, talking, I believe, and they were going to talk about if they put the parking spaces here, that pole's going to be moved to the other side of the entrance.
The pole I'm talking about is actually right in the middle.
In the middle, okay.
Yes, there's a pole in the middle, you don't even notice it.
It's right at the back corner.
Oh, I didn't know about that one, yeah.
That's like the last one.
Yeah, the one here is-
Because it had the spotlight on it for the back of the park.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that's, I'm regretting, right in the middle.
So not the one that's back here, okay.
Okay. So it sounds like in terms of like this, whether it's, like you said, a town ordinance of no, did someone put that sign up just as, you know, on their own initiative, or was it a town ordinance, and how does that, you know, affect this decision, you know?
I believe it was the trustees, I'm pretty sure.
Which would make sense, because really you didn't want, it's pretty dark out there, so you, you know, you probably didn't, and it's just the benches currently, so they probably just didn't want people hanging, hanging around or loitering. I think this, sort of an event-driven, or ultimately will become an event-driven park, hopefully. It's just going to be a different, you know, a different feel, a different animal, so I don't know that, I mean, we can certainly have that conversation, and we have time for it.
Right.
I don't, I think, and it's a wide-open space, I mean, basically, as you look at the design, whereas the Smith Academy Park is just, you know, surrounded by the trees and the bushes, and I can understand why the trustees, if that's who in fact it was, because I have no idea who it was, you know, had that, you know, no trespassing or no loitering after dark. I know the schools do it, because when schools close, nobody should be hanging around the schools at night, I mean, so that's, that's why that's there. But I think, again, it depends on, you know, what it's really geared towards or geared for.
And that's fine, obviously, we don't need decisions, not even, that gives us a little leeway, or guidance, I should say. We're going to meet with Martha, you know, the bids go out, I mean, quite frankly, the lighting is, in terms of budget, as the bids come back, that's not, that's not at the top of the list.
Understood.
So, you know-
I don't know within the budget whether you could put some pipes in just to have it there.
That was the other-
And then with the intent that maybe in the future, the stuff's in place.
Right, that was the other suggestion.
That's a cheap out for now. I mean, you could have the option of a switch in there that they could turn on if you have a concert, a summer concert series.
Right.
And then, but for the most part in the summer, the light stays on, it's light until like nine, so you may or may not really need them, I don't know. So the liability is an issue with after dark, somebody goes on that property, and it's now town-owned, if they get hurt, you know, at 10 or 11 o'clock at night, and there's no, if there's lights, it could be like Cindy said, an invitation to come and use the park at that hour, is that the intent? And we, I guess we're going to have to look at that bylaw, if there's a bylaw that actually exists about being on town property after dark, which is another issue, so.
Right. So that's fine, so we'll keep all this in mind, and at some point, perhaps even have Martha in here, if we got to the point where, you know, we need to, sort of, that point of design where we need to say, do it or don't do it, you know?
Yeah, it looks good. I mean, and I like Ed's suggestion, it sounds like you guys already spoke about it, Rich, maybe getting the conduit in there once, once the landscaping's taking place.
We got one issue resolved.
If it sits, if it sits there, it sits there, but, you know, you don't want to have to dig one up twice, right?
Right, yeah, we need to, right, we need to get the, I mean, for the pavilion, we're going to need some electricity, for sure.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
So that's going to happen, that's going to happen when you design the park, or else it's a get-up later.
Sure.
I mean, the other conduits would be where the, along pathway where the lights would go, but I think, you know, to get those in is probably the bigger expense, the lights themselves aren't that much, so.
Sure. You know, and certainly, I know Martha's the expert, and as I look, if it were to be a nighttime lighting, you almost could have, as in the diagram you sent us, you almost could have something on town hall, on the roof, a lighting of some sort facing out that way, and then maybe just a pole on the street in the corner coming back this way. Not, not really part of the park, but enough light to light up the park, you know, depending on how we do with the costs of what you're, what you're suggesting.
You won't need a lot of power, like, I don't think you're going to have The Grateful Dead where you need a generator with four hundred amps.
I don't know.
But, you know.
I don't think we've gone that far, but.
Not yet.
A lighted cupola on top would look good.
Yeah, yeah. We'll figure something out with that, but.
Just had a question.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Do you know what the construction material for the walkways is going to be?
The, excuse me, the what?
The walkways, do you know what the construction material is?
It's going to be concrete.
Concrete, okay.
We originally had tar, and that was, I guess aesthetically was being questioned, and then the town, unbeknownst to us, had the perimeter sidewalk changed from tar to concrete, so now it wouldn't blend in. And so we fudged it, concrete.
And just one question, the memorial stones that are going to be moved, do you know how far back from the walkway they were going to be? I was just hoping, you know, it might come up in your conversations, that they're not too close, because there's been a number of times where I've seen people like sitting on them, or the dogs relieving on them, so if somebody's walking through, I hope they wouldn't be too close for, you know, someone's going to be disrespecting them.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you had in mind, we're starting to keep that in mind, I guess the ideal, I mean, I'm not sure what the distance now is right now, but she could keep them similar distance if that seems to be a-
And just a thought for when you're discussing it.
Sure.
I think the only conversation we had on that was, it'd be nice that now people walk by them, they can see them, because some people don't see them where they're at, because they're off, they're on the grass, so they're, this might actually make people say, hey, they got something here.
Right.
But, but you make up a good point of, you know, if it's too close to the sidewalk, then you've got the dogs, and you've got people sitting on them, and yes.
Got you.
So, that's a good point.
Good.
Great.
Yeah.
Did, do you have any other questions, Cindy or Ed at this point, or Rich or Peter?
No, no, I don't, thanks.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, good, just wanted to get some feedback, it's been helpful.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You've probably got more feedback than you want.
It's anticipated.
No, not at all, that's good. All right, so we'll keep you in touch-
Yeah, sounds great.
... as things progress.
All right, Rich, thank you, thanks for your-
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, guys. We're getting there, you're getting there. All right. Topic number nine, I think, Marlene, if I'm not mistaken.
Property insurance coverage.
Yeah.
Just quickly, if, as you know, there was a delay with the closing on the center school, should it become necessary to extend or renew the insurance on the property? I'd just like the board's approval for the chairman to sign off on that renewal, if it becomes necessary.
Right, we're hoping in the next week or two, you've heard it before, we're hoping in the next week or two to be able to actually sign the deed and let the developer have their way with that building, so.
You're hoping, I'm praying, in the next couple of weeks or two, just have to sign.
Right, but just in case that, to Marlene's point, in case that got pushed out even further, we've got to make sure we're covered with the building across the street, so that's, insurance-wise, so that's, that's what that was about. Okay. Oh, so do you want to vote that they, that Cindy and Ed allow me to sign, or are you just telling me, or do you want, or just a feel for them?
Just looking for the board to agree that if it needs to be renewed, that you have the board's authorization to go ahead and sign the renewal.
I'll make the motion. We've got to protect that building, so.
Yeah, Cindy, you want a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion or comment?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, Marlene.
Thank you.
And then we have an update under Continual Business, which is the Green Communities Grant Award in the approved contract.
Yes, we received notification from the Department of Energy Resources that the town was awarded the fiscal year '17 Green Communities Grant. In your package, there's a letter from the department, and it just, I advise there are a list of those projects that we had submitted. There was a reduction in the amount we were requesting. We did remove the conversion, oil conversion-
Right.
-to gas at the library, and the, actually, the reduction was in administrative costs. We're looking for $8,500. If you recall, we received a $5,000 technical assistance grant-
Right.
-with PVPC, which actually that money is funded by Department of Energy Resources, and in exchange for in-kind, you know, hours-
Yeah.
-from, from the staff here to work with PVPC. But every, every other project is covered.
Yeah, that's great. The rough number of that is, all of them together is about $65,000, give or take, I didn't, I just added the big numbers. But, you know, that's our share, Hatfield's share is about $65,000 from the Department of Energy Resources, so.
And my understanding is it's, they control the project, they actually oversee the project and the contractors, or how does that work?
The town oversees it, and in the past, the DPW director was charged with overseeing the operations. So two things I'm looking for is, somebody does need to do that on behalf of the town, and if you'd like Phil to do that, and then also the board needs to vote to authorize the chairman to sign the contract.
Okay, so I would suggest that yes, Phil be the person to spearhead this, or at least through Phil, and if certain work groups can take on that responsibility, but, you know, almost an overall project director, I would suggest that that be the facility manager, which is Phil.
Actually, Phil and I are meeting with a representative from Guardian Energy tomorrow, tomorrow morning, just to set up the plan for these projects. My recommendation is to start with the schools, since the schools are not in session, so we'll be able to get in there and do that.
What is the WWTP?
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of Marlene, or comments?
No, I mean, the way we're going to get this money, it's all money given to us, and these projects were already determined by the Department of Energy of what we could receive, and these were based on some types of formula that they already figured out as far as-
Right, yes.
-the lighting and all that stuff.
And submissions that we made to them, saying-
Right.
This, these are the projects we want, we want to work on if we're given the grant.
We submitted a grant application, this is a reimbursable grant, so we pay the invoices, and all the invoices, the processing of that goes through my office.
And the hiring of the contractors to do this work goes through-
Guardian Energy.
Right, and we just work with them, but they-
Correct.
-they do the, get the contracts out, they get, they deal with the contractors, I guess that's the point I was trying to make earlier, we're, we're sort of more of a administrative side of the house to make sure that they're doing their job to get this done, that's all, right?
That's correct.
And we help them coordinate with the schools and that, okay?
That's right.
And I'm happy the town can receive $69,000 to get some stuff done, so.
Yeah.
I definitely think it's a good thing.
And because of the, being from the Department of Energy, you know, it helps us get some, some help in financing those projects, and of course, they would also become more energy-efficient, so there's, there's more savings on top of that down the road to, that's the idea-
And there's a couple of projects where there will be an energy saving-
Yes.
-or actually a rebate through the utility company.
Right, yeah, good, good stuff, thanks, Marlene.
You're welcome.
So you're looking for Ed and Cindy to allow the chair to enter into the contract?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Correct, so if one of you would make that motion, if you don't mind?
I'll make a motion that the chair signs the contract. I'll make a motion that the chair signs the contract.
Okay, is there a second to that?
A second then.
Thank you, Cindy, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, do we need to decide, if, do we have to say anything as far as Marlene and Phil working with them to ensure that these get done, or?
Or Phil overseeing it?
I, I think it's, I mean, I think, I think it would, I think Marlene will probably have a conversation with Phil, because they're meeting with Guardian tomorrow, and just say, you know, the select board, you know, wants, wants you and Phil.
I had asked Phil if he would be available to me.
And he's been, he's overseen past projects as well, so this isn't something new.
That's right, and when an invoice comes in, I ask Phil if the project is complete.
Right, right, so, so that's not, that's not a new process.
So we don't, we don't need to make a motion on that.
I don't think so.
That should be a direction from us saying, go and do it, right?
Right, as facilities manager, right, absolutely, yep.
Okay.
All right, so we went, we jumped around a little bit, so I, I think we hit everything on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I just have one other thing I wanted to mention, actually, under announcements, or please jump in. So during the month of July and August, Town Hall offices, well, those offices that are open on Fridays will work, start their day a half hour earlier Monday through Thursday, and work a half hour later. And the Town Hall will be closed at 12:30 on Fridays.
On Fridays for July and August.
July and August.
But the, but they're open earlier Monday through Thursday.
That's right, that's correct.
So they're still doing their 40 hours.
Well, the employees are still doing the 40, and Town Hall is still open the same amount of hours for the same departments.
Town Hall was open 8:30 to 4:30, now it's eight to five, Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
And Friday's hours?
Friday till 12:30.
For all offices?
Well, just those offices that work on Friday, not every office is open on Friday. Senior center actually, they still, they have lunch, they finish up closer to 1 o'clock.
And what was the, the purpose of doing Fridays earlier?
Well, it's, it's an incentive, the employees appreciate it. There's very little, you know, traffic in the Town Hall on Fridays in general, particularly the summertime.
Okay, because my only concern is, like, I believe it was last meeting, we were talking about that, we said we needed somebody in the clerk's office more, and we were increasing hours.
They increased their hours on Wednesday, they're open on Wednesdays.
It's like for shortening hours, so somebody would be in the offices, so I'm just surprised.
The Town Clerk's Office, as of July 1st, is open on Wednesdays, yeah, they're not open on Fridays.
Anyway, but, okay, just the concern that we need more people, you know, more hours in here, and then we're talking about closing on Friday afternoons, I'm just surprised, you know, one meeting to the next.
I understand what you're saying, you know, Friday afternoons, however, we are opening the building up a half hour earlier in the morning and staying open a half hour later, four days a week. So that, that is a benefit to people who can't, aren't able to get here, you know, maybe before they, before we close at 4:30. I mean, we can certainly review it and talk about it, if it's not working.
Yeah, it really, I personally don't have a problem with it, I didn't have a problem the last time we tried this a couple of years ago. But I, I think that, you know, the, the bottom line for me is that the townspeople realize that the same amount of hours are being offered for the same departments. It, it's just reshuffling, you know, as, as Marlene mentioned, you know, for the summer to try to make, you know, make things a little easier and, and a little bit of an incentive, as you said. So personally, I, I don't have a problem with it, I certainly understand what Cindy's saying, because we have talked about expanding hours in certain departments. But in this, in this instance, that, that particular department isn't open on Fridays anyway. So it, it's really affecting those departments who are only in here on, on Friday afternoons normally.
Right.
Which really isn't a whole lot to be perfectly honest with.
Really the administrative staff that's open to the public, that's, if anybody comes in, it's to, you know, contact the administrative staff office. And the other offices, well, the collector's office is not open on, they're in there working, they're not open to the public on Friday.
Right.
And the assessor's office is closed, Town Clerk's office is closed.
Myself, I, I sort of don't have a problem giving it a try, they're still working the 40 hours. And as long as they're doing the eight to five, that's fine. But if they stop doing the eight to five and figure they can sneak out earlier, then if that does happen, then we shut it down, that's all. So.
Okay.
It's just for July and August on a trial basis, I guess, and.
Everybody is putting in their 40 hours. Those that work 40 hours.
Right.
I just wanna.
Yeah.
Yeah, I said everybody, not everybody works 40 hours.
Okay. Any other, anything? Comments? Unanticipated, and nothing last minute came in that didn't make it to the agenda itself? Under unanticipated new business, right?
Yeah.
Our next meeting, we're trying to schedule one for next week, either Wednesday or Thursday, Cindy, to meet with the finance committee, because we, and, because we have to make the necessary transfers from end of year budgets from one, one department to another and approve them combined with them. Yeah, it should be a short meeting.
Short meeting, which is, finance committee's having trouble getting a quorum for Wednesday, the 12th, so it's looking like the 13th.
That's fine.
All right, so we've asked them to let us know as soon as they can, so that we can make our schedules.
I will be at our town, I will be at our town, so hopefully you'll have, both of you guys will be here.
Yep.
Just make sure the right, it's posted the right time in the hallway.
Well, it was posted.
Not by you, it wasn't your, no, I know it wasn't you.
This is what was submitted, this is what was submitted, the agenda, since 5:30, so I don't know how that happened, but.
Stuff happens, you miss all the fun stuff, Cindy, you can watch it on TV if you wanna know what happened.
I, I just have, I, I guess it's sort of old business, I think, because we have stuff like this all the time, and planning board, everybody has it, I'm wondering if sometime down the road, we could review probably a projector, so you can plug in a computer so that town people can actually see what we're seeing. So I'd just like to know, maybe we could entertain that idea of where to put it, or you have a meeting here and they can bring in their laptop, blow it up, then everybody at home along with us can see what's being shown, that's all.
I like that.
Yeah, I, I do think that, and that's fine, I, I do think that the individual boards that, that, that speak to this do that at their individual meetings. I mean, I, I know the planning board oftentimes does, you know, depending on what, depending on how big the project is, you know, I mean, something, and I agree, something with this magnitude, the park that is, be nice to be seen. But I'm pretty sure Open Space actually does that at their meetings, when Martha brings the, the architectural drawings, so. They probably already have it, as far as bringing it in. You know, I don't know. Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I, I mean, if they have something to present and, and to show, I think that's fine. You know, they also had it at town meeting, but, I mean, we can continue the conversation, but they're, those departments are gonna be the ones that need to bring forth the information, we're not doing that for them.
Either projector or the boards.
Yeah, they, I mean, we'll, yeah.
I have easels, I can provide the easels for boards.
Correct, but this is their, this is their show, presenting it to the board of selectmen and to the town, so they, they can bring forward whatever it is they, they want us to.
I'm just saying, like at UMass at work, everybody at all the conference rooms, you have like a setup where you can come in and you can blow it up on, on the wall, on a board and stuff, by making that available, it just makes it easy for everybody. If they, they have it to present it, then they can, then present it that way.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying, I mean, it's not.
And I think that's fine, as long as they realize, you know, it's on those, those groups and departments and boards to bring it forward.
I'm not saying it's mandatory that if you come to a meeting, you gotta blow it up on the screen, just having the access to be able to do it.
I, I believe, right, and, and I know we've had that in the past, actually. I think that part of that might boil down to also what, what is the topic? I mean, I think sometimes we're just getting an overview of something that they're discussing, other times it's, they need to sell it, right? To, to, to the towns, to us as select board members and to the townspeople. And they certainly should have some sort of a presentation at that point, so everybody has a clear understanding. I would, I would agree with that.
And now they gotta bring all the portable equipment and set everything up, if, if it's already there, then.
Right, you're saying that we're already pre-programmed for AV, or whatever we're calling it these days, but basically audio visual, and just kind of plug and play, but.
All right, that's all.
Would that work for you, John?
It's not easy.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll tell you after the meeting, why it's not.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Okay. And, anything else?
That's it.
Anything else? So, so, okay, so our regular, regularly scheduled monthly meeting right now is scheduled for August 2nd, which is a Wednesday?
Correct.
Okay, Wednesday, August 2nd. Of course, we'll probably have another five or 10 meetings between now and then, as things have been going. But our, our monthly regularly scheduled meeting is on Wednesday, August 2nd, okay? And then we're, we'll work our way backwards to fill in other things that come up.
It was added at the bottom of the agenda.
Oh, at what time are we having that meeting, 5:30?
The August 2nd meeting, that would be 5:30 unless somebody cannot meet that early.
Cindy, would 5:45 be better for you?
Either one's fine, as long as it's posted properly, I'm gonna save this one.
Next week's meeting will probably be later, because the finance committee isn't available early until 6:30.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Second?
Take a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Aye, thank you, thank you, John. All right.